So these are, these are the original, these are unanimous, these are the ones that we moved in committee just now.
Alright, I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order. We have two public hearings tonight, if the clerk would read those.
Public hearing number one, regarding a proposed ordinance amending Article Four of Chapter 228 and Chapter 138 of the Code of the City of Schenectady, regulating vaults within the city right-of-way's.
Alright, and public hearing number two.
Public hearing number two, concerning housing and community development needs for the federal consolidated plan, CDBG.
Okay, then we'll move in on to items for original consideration, item number one.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 230-2 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady, relative to consolidation of residential lots.
Alright, this was discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, under original consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 228-82 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing, relative to regulating sidewalk cafes.
Alright, calling for a public hearing, without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution accepting New York State Department of Motor Vehicles Police Traffic Services Program grant.
I don't think there's any argument with this one, so without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the city to accept funding for assisting stop DWI enforcement.
Also without objection on consent, item number five, I'm going to put back in committee for next week, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution appointing Douglas Williams to the Board of Assessment Review.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution confirming the mayoral appointment of Rose Harrell to the Civilian Police Review Board.
This was also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surchargeary concerning properties owned by Queen Point LLC.
This was discussed in Claims Committee, without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by John Taylor.
Also discussed in Claims, without objection on consent, item number ten.
Item number ten, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Crystal Zentars.
Also discussed in Committee, without objection on consent, item number eleven.
Item number eleven, a resolution recognizing the Historic Street Sign Initiative.
Alright, this will be taken out of order, Ms. Perazzo will present this, item number twelve.
Item number twelve, a resolution recognizing Habitat for Humanity.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Mutavaren will present that, item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, under Contract and Supply, a resolution authorizing purchase of sodium hypochlorite.
Also discussed in Committee, without objection on consent, item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, a resolution authorizing purchase of hydrofluoric acetic acid.
Also discussed in Committee, without objection on consent, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, a resolution authorizing purchase of chlorine gas.
Also discussed in Committee, without objection on consent, and then we will move to the additional items from the committee tonight. Okay, so item, what would it be, number sixteen?
Number sixteen, item number sixteen, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing transfer of title of 219 North Brandywine Avenue.
This was discussed in the Claims Committee meeting tonight, without objection on consent, item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of 366 Duane Ave.
Also discussed in Claims tonight, without objection on consent, item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of 1418 Chrysler Ave.
Also discussed in Claims, without objection on consent, and then we have three additional items to go on by unanimous consent. The clerk would read the first one.
A resolution honoring Chief Michael Delaracco.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve this, okay, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. And also a motion to move this to the consent agenda, okay, Ms. Porterfield, Ms. Perazzo, all in favor, aye, thank you. This one will also be taken out of order, Ms. Perazzo will present that, okay, the next item.
A resolution confirming the mayoral appointment of Dini Pelmatier to the Civilian Police Review Board.
Entertain a motion to move that to the agenda, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. And then a motion to move it to the consent agenda, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor, aye. And the last one.
A resolution accepting title to various properties from the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency.
This was just discussed in the meeting tonight, I'll entertain a motion to move that to the agenda, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor, aye. And then a motion to move it to the consent agenda, okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor, aye, okay. Alright, there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Perazzo, where are they, okay, Mr. Erickson seconds, all in favor, aye. Alright, I will now call to order the City Council meeting for January 27th, 2014, and ask you to rise for the invocation. And this is going to be by Reverend Alan Kinney of the Eastern Parkway United Methodist Church.
Thank you, my people wish my sermon would move as smoothly as all that shall we be together. Creator of life and all that it holds, you who have given us such potential, help us this evening to live into that potential, to know that all are created to be equal, to be treated as equals. Help this council and the people of Schenectady to serve the people and not the party, to be about what is best for the most and not the least. We give thanks for having places to go on a cold evening, and we remember those who don't have. Be with and bless this work, I ask, amen.
I'm going to ask Chief Delaracco to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Erickson. Mr. Riggi. Mr. Mutavaren. Ms. King.
Alright, we have three out-of-order resolutions, the first one is dealing with our historic street signs, Ms. Perazzo.
Excellent, we have a prop. Madam President.
You have the floor.
Excellent, okay, this is a resolution recognizing the Historic Street Sign Initiative. Whereas several years ago, Schenectady's Historic Commission passed a motion to install unique street signs in the city's historic districts, with said signs to include custom-designed brackets and posts, and the names of particular historic districts with the signage color to be Heritage Brown, a color which is standard for heritage tourism signage that will tie into future historic scenic and preservation initiatives. And whereas Beth Pettah volunteered to coordinate the project, and whereas the community has united in extraordinary fashion to fund the entire project with the cooperation of the Schenectady City Council, city officials, and the DSIC, combined with financial support from Schenectady Heritage Foundation, Union College, Schenectady residents, and Friends of the Stockade Historic District, the Stockade Association, Morris Avenue Historic District, and GE Realty Plot Neighborhood Association. And whereas all of these groups have created the momentum necessary to continue the final stage of the initiative by installing new signs in the extensive Union Corridor and Union Triangle Historic Districts. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to recognize and thank Beth Pettah and the sponsors of the Historic Street Sign Initiative for their commitment and dedication to the City of Schenectady. And I will attest to the fact that Beth is at Proctor's most Wednesdays and also at the Green Market trying to spread the word on a regular basis. She's really very committed along with her other partners, so I will make a motion to move this.
Okay, is there a second, okay, Mr. Erickson, all in favor, aye, congratulations and thank you.
I brought the prop because I wanted those who don't know about the project to see the quality of product that we're using here. And this phase of the project is about $16,500, that's the Union Corridor and the Union Triangle. And I added it up and we're just about at $9,000, so this is coming a timely way that we're halfway there and it's a nice way to get the word out to the public, what we're doing, and anybody who might want to participate financially. From $40, which would upgrade the paint job from regular to powder coat, to a $219, adopt a street where the council allowed us to have the old signs so that we could give them to those people who adopted a street. So if you took Union at Lafayette, for instance, like Creative Advantage, they're going to take that Union sign when the signs come down. And Schenectady Heritage Foundation is paying for all of the posts for the entire project, they're a partner. Union College came on as a partner. They made it possible for us to upgrade from a maintenance, high-maintenance wrought iron to a low-maintenance aluminum bracket. And the DSIC is supporting us by being the fiscal agent, I'll let Colleen say a couple of words. But I also wanted to say that we're doing this in cooperation with St. John the Evangelist Church, who's working with me to write a grant for this, so we're shooting for having the order in to get everything made maybe in March and have the signs up by late spring.
Great.
The only thing to really add is online donations are available. You can go to downtownschenectady.com and click on the link and make an online donation. We are a 501(c)(3), so if you work for GE, I see you Kathy, you know, donations can be matched. So if you have a matching option, so from the fundraising standpoint, which is always, yes, and tax deductible. So any donations you have are tax deductible too. So it's a great project and I think, I don't know if anybody's seen the Erie Canal Byway passes, but the Heritage Brown does tie in with all of the other unique heritage and historic corridor information's going on. I don't know if Gloria, you want to add anything? Oh, people want to see it. Hey!
Well, I'd just like to say that the Heritage Foundation feels that this is a very worthy project. And basically what our involvement is, really it's like a matching grant to people that buy and adopt a street sign. And really the first thing about a historic district is to recognize that you're in a special place. So this will follow the example of the other three historic districts that are already done. And it just identifies that people are in a special place and special city rules do apply.
Okay, well, thank you again for your efforts on this. Okay, our next out-of-order resolution is Recognizing Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Mutavaren is going to present that.
Madam President.
Okay, you have the floor.
A resolution recognizing Habitat for Humanity. Whereas Habitat for Humanity was founded in 1993 and is globally recognized as a nonprofit and ecumenical housing organization serving Schenectady by acting as a social advocate, builder, and banker. And whereas Habitat for Humanity has created a neighborhood revitalization program to improve targeted neighborhoods by increasing curb appeal, by encouraging homeowners to settle in the city. And whereas the Neighborhood Revitalization Program has focused on three avenues to complete its mission by painting interiors, weatherizing homes, by sealing air leak and added insulation, and finish critical repair that allow owners to stay in their home. And whereas the Neighborhood Revitalization Program has complete work on its first target area, specifically Foster Avenue and Carey Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Schenectady pause in their deliberation to recognize and thank Habitat for Humanity for its sponsorship of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program and its commitment and dedication to the future of Schenectady. Madam President, may I move this?
You may, and this is our second, okay, Ms. Perazzo, all in favor, aye. Again, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, I'm pleased to be joined by three of our board members tonight, Madeleine Thorid, Chuck Becker, and Kathy Lewis. And thank you very much for this, it's been a very cooperative effort. And we certainly thank the mayor and his office for the assistance and the support that they have given in this. And as we start our second year along this line, we're going to learn and do better and do more. So it's very exciting work and we appreciate all the volunteers and all the people that have helped us get here. And we are going to keep going, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the third out-of-order resolution is Recognizing Our Outgoing Fire Chief, Chief Delaracco. Ms. Perazzo is going to present this. This is a sad day coming up, I have to tell you that.
Well, it is my honor, but very bittersweet to present this, but I know under the strong and good leadership of our chief, he's left us with a good, strong fire department to carry on until we have a new chief. So Madam President.
Yes, you have the floor, and if you'd like to come up here and take pictures from here, you certainly may.
This resolution is honoring Chief Michael Delaracco. Whereas Michael Delaracco was first appointed as a firefighter in 1975, and whereas he has demonstrated his leadership through the years and risen to the level of chief, and whereas his expertise in the field has been recognized by his peers through publication of several articles in professional journals, and whereas his commitment to the core values of firefighting was demonstrated by his command as the task force leader for the New York State Urban Technical Search and Rescue Team. And whereas his response as the leader of the first USAR on the scene of the September 11 World Trade Center attacks during the largest search and rescue effort in our country's history further demonstrates his dedication to serve those in need. And whereas Chief Delaracco counts among his many awards and commendations, New York State Assembly and New York State Senate citations, a New York State Senate proclamation, Schenectady City Council Special Resolutions, and a Schenectady Fire Department Medal of Merit, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the mayor pause in their deliberations to thank Chief Michael Delaracco for his tireless service, not only to the people of the City of Schenectady, but to everyone in the state of New York and the nation, and to honor him for his dedication and wish him the very, very best in his future. Madam President, I move this.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor, aye. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you very much, I would like to say a few thank yous. And I've said before, a career in public safety is a career in public service, and I do believe that. When a fire officer first takes that position, his or her greatest responsibility is to the personnel. And the higher in rank you go, the greater that responsibility. But it has been very humbling and a great honor for me to have had that opportunity and that duty. Over the period of my years here as a firefighter, a company officer, and a command officer, I've worked under at least two city managers, several mayors, many council members. And I want to say thank you, thank you Mayor McCarthy, Council President King, and council members because I know that you, and I'm sure all of your predecessors, worked for the best of the City of Schenectady. And I believe that today, Schenectady is moving forward. I think if you look around, you can see it. And it's because of our elected leaders, our department heads, our community leaders, and the city workers that this is happening, and working together really does work. I will be finishing up, but finally, and probably most importantly, I'd like to say thank you to the people of the City of Schenectady and express my gratitude for their defense and support of the Schenectady Fire Department. Without any regard to politics, it's really been my pleasure and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve our department, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's safe to say you will be missed. Alright, okay, well, you just have to come back periodically. Alright, we have two public hearings tonight, if the clerk would read the first one.
Public hearing number one, regarding a proposed ordinance amending Article Four of Chapter 228 and Chapter 138 of the Code of the City of Schenectady, regulating vaults within the city right-of-way.
I have one person signed up to speak to this, and that's Petey Vorus.
I'm Petey Vorus, I live in the city, I've been here 14 years, 15 years, starting my 14th year in the same address. I could not wait to get home and to use, find my city codes in the internet. So I speedily went to it and I was surprised that as the proposition was advertised in the legal notices in the newspapers, I was very underwhelmed by the amount of information there. It does not read that the city has any right-of-way, the way I was reading it, but that they do issue permits upon request, that these vaults in the past have been particular to certain buildings and not to the city. So I think the, from my reading of it, the legislation or the charter should read, or the codes, laws, whatever lawyers want to call these, they should be differently and state that the city does have a right-of-way. And it's my understanding that there will be closing of, somewhere in the neighborhood of five vaults and in the building of newer vaults, and that underground basement entry level at this sidewalk will be taken care of so that everybody can walk on these areas safely and not fear for falling through sidewalk, thank you.
Thank you, I have no one else signed up to speak for this public hearing, so I'm going to declare that closed and we'll move on to the second one.
Second public hearing, concerning housing and community development needs for the federal consolidated plan, CDBGs.
Alright, the first person signed up is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor, the Community Development Block Grant. This is about the fourth year we've had these hearings after the RFP has already been issued. What good is it to have a public hearing when you've already issued the RFP? So what are you asking the public for? You're asking for nothing. And to have this public hearing is totally wrong. There are several things that are basically wrong with the thing. You have, you applied for a HUD grant of $3 million. Of that, you're going to take the $100,000 that you're getting for the sales tax agreement, and you've got another $69,000 that you have to come up with. Well, whereabouts, and you said you were going to take it out of the Community Development Block Grant, is that out of the back-of-the-house money, the $2.5 million that you keep doing every year in October? Or is it out of this money of about $200,000? If it's out of this money, out of the 15%, that means you're going to have a 20% cut across the board. We haven't even explained where that money is going to go from, okay? And that is to go to a private developer to demolish a building at $500,000. So, I mean, and then, the five-year plan was done in 2010. What was passed by the City Council and what was presented by the mayor to the HUD was totally different. So they falsified the document in that point. So now, but the five-year plan is going to be due next May, not this coming May. So where is that going to be put out, where's the public hearings on that? We've had several job contracts, Erie Boulevard, over $13 million of federal money. Minority and persons with disabilities did not come into compliance. I mean, the affirmative action officer manager that we're paying $50,000 out of this thing has not even done her job. I mean, even the Human Rights Commission has come out and says, oh, well, we have some things we've got to work on, but never anything gets done, never, nothing gets done with the affirmative action manager to move forward. We've had several county and city employees retire and they said that since, and it was reported in last year's, in the Gazette paper, when they did it, she says that it's gotten worse since 2010 in hiring minorities, persons with disabilities in the city and the county. So I mean, where are we looking at? You've got the affirmative action manager coming up here and saying, oh, we've got the civil service exam coming up for police and fire, but every time, you've got seven white male officers being hired. You know, where is the affirmative action, where are the jobs? Because in the consolidated plan, the five-year plan, you had listed you wanted to do 100 jobs within the five years. You haven't even worked on that at all, here it is, the fourth, in the final year, we're not even there. So we need to go back in and look at this thing for the Community Development Block Grants because holding the hearing after the RFP and not getting answers of where the money's actually going to go isn't fair to the public, thank you.
Thank you. Petey Vorus.
I'm Petey Vorus and I live in the city. Back in 2010, Ms. Solinger brought before this council a statement that 90% of the CDBG money went to salaries. I'm not that close to statistical taking, she works with the state of New York and she does have privy to those kinds of statistics. However, I do know that a certain council member was employed in a CDBG program and her pay was $40,000. And that continued at least for two, maybe even three years, the program was dis- The program was discontinued, and much to my shock and horror was the program. After three years, there was no one in that particular community, it was a zoned project. No one was able to go forth with that program as a community volunteer program. That is poor leadership. I don't, I don't think it matters how much of an oratory establishment you can create with that kind of money, and I even wonder if this council is not, at this point, 50/50 an employment program. So I don't take kindly or feel too hurt by some of the slurs being made, and I do take them as slurs. Things happen from time to time to people. I do know that personally. And I would certainly consider my life endowed greatly to be able to make what you people are making, just as council people.
Thank you. Professor Dwight Willens.
I may have signed the wrong form.
Okay. This is to speak particularly to the housing, community development needs for the consolidated plan.
Okay, I'll wait until the more appropriate time.
Okay, yeah, there's, you'll have the legislative agenda and then general city business. Okay. Thank you. Jeff Clark.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity here in Schenectady County, I just want to state that although we do not, at this point, utilize any CDBG money, I certainly support the city, and I know of the efforts that go into this, and I feel that it is well thought through. They are doing the best they can to maximize the good use of this money, and I would support whatever they are doing to move forward.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'll declare this public hearing closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from January 13th, 2014. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, January 27th, 2014, under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated January 27th, 2014. Letter received from Paul LaFawn, the Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the hydrofluoric acid lowest bid be awarded to Key Chemical Inc. of Waxhaw, North Carolina in the amount of $40,592 to be charged to the 2014 operating budget. Letter received from Paul LaFawn, the Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the sodium hypochlorite lowest bid be awarded to Surpass Chemical Company of Albany, New York in the amount of $67,590 to be charged to the 2014 operating budget. Letter received from Paul LaFawn, the Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the chlorine gas lowest bid be awarded to Jones Chemical Inc. of Warwick, New York in the amount of $18,250 to be charged to the 2014 operating budget. Under general, there are none; under petitions, there are none.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, I wanted to take note of the three communications that were just presented just now with the chemicals for the water treatment plant. All three of those, well, two of the three actually ended up coming in below last year's cost. All three of them had multiple competitive bids, and I'd like to commend Paul LaFawn, Carl Olson, and the group that do the water treatment plant, doing a great job in really attracting multiple competitive bidders. And so overall, I don't have the exact tally of how many dollars it actually, you know, we had in terms of deflation or savings over the prior years, but we did a great job and saved some money on that, so I think that's great. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. Thank you. Under Health and Recreation, there was actually something that was on the agenda today that we're going to be holding for two weeks, but I'd also like to, you know, we've talked considerably about the RFP process and how it goes, and there's been a lot of discussion among the council and questions from the general public. So we will be having an open discussion regarding the RFP process, and so we'll, you know, give the information that when that will happen and just how the process works. I am extremely confident that the people that we asked to review our RFPs are doing excellent job, they're doing it fairly, and so we just want everyone to understand how the process works. So we'll have that meeting going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have four people signed up to speak. First, Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council. Mayor, I'm Jason Plank, City of Schenectady. Last week, we had the legislative agenda was on dumping snow onto sidewalks and so forth, but I also want to remind people, dumping snow onto disability parking spaces and access aisles is also illegal, and it's a $125 fine. I was hoping that we can be able to get this thing raised up to 150, but Councilman Blanchard is no longer here and was ill, and I wasn't able to take the lead, but I'm hoping the city council will probably take this back up and try to get it to the 150 so that all the disability parking is all at 150. Also, too, is last week, we discussed about the pay raises and the office. I have always said that we needed to do a complete overhaul of the job descriptions of what is within the city workforce. We need to have diversification. We need to have diversification within it. And you also got to realize, the average CSA, city employee is about 40,000, the county is about 42,000, the average city resident is only about 31,000, 32,000. The average Hamilton Hill resident is only about 16,000 per year, and the average fire department and police department is around 75,000. When you start talking 4% pay raises, when the last year COLA increases was only 1.5, and the previous year was three, and then the previous year was zero and zero, where's the disabled and where's the elderly? We're not getting these 4% pay raises. Also, too, is when somebody works out of the classification, that's illegal under the union contracts. So when the commissioner is saying you've got somebody working out of contract, it's because it's more beneficial for them to work out of contract, out of grade, because if they did, they would have to go back down to the regular steps. Once they go up to the next one, then they have to go back from step 10, they've got to go back to step 1, and then go through the steps all over again. So there's cost benefit analysis that needs to be done across the whole entire board. And also, too, is what happened January 1st of this year? Both the police and the fire departments, both of their contracts are up, and they had, since 2008, had 4% pay raises every year. And so, I mean, we need to be able to take a look at the whole entire thing. And I mean, and then on top of all, I spoke here last year, you were giving the Department of Development pay raises of $10,000, $15,000 when you did some of those stuff. That's where you moved, moved the affirmative, fair housing officer up to the new jobs, from 49,000 to 64,000. So I mean, you're getting these jobs piecemeal, and you need to go back in and look at it and broaden out the thing. So I mean, you know, these are some of the things that need to take a look at, and just 4%, that's just not cutting it, not with inflation is 1.5.
Thank you. Harry Brand.
Harry Brand, resident, taxpayer in the city of Schenectady. I lived here all my life, and I've paid taxes most of my life, but I do, I can't agree with any salary increases within the city Schenectady employees, none whatsoever. What our mayor has done in giving a $10,000 gift to Mr. Polino was uncalled for. $20,000 salary increases are uncalled for. Now, you've got probably 70, 80 people in this city making over $100,000. That's my estimate. How can you give these people making over $100,000 overtime pay? Where do you come up with this? We, you don't understand that we have people in this city making $20,000 and less, trying to exist on their own. They can't buy their food, they can't buy their medicine, and you want to give 3, 4 to 40% increases are requested from you? You cannot do that. We cannot bear it anymore. When are you going to stand up and, I don't care if it's the union, the employees, the commissioner, and tell them, no, it's done, the good days are over with? And I don't care if it's the city or the school system, we cannot afford it anymore. It's gone too far. I understand you're paying clothing allowances to people on disability. They don't come to work. What are you paying clothing allowances for? You've got enough expenses over there with that building on Foster Avenue. Who would build a house and not have a warranty on the equipment in it? Two years, and the furnace goes, you have to replace the furnace, no warranty. Do you know this? Do you understand it? We can't spend this kind of money on the employees. Not that they don't deserve it, and I don't blame them for asking. I blame you people if you give it to them. $10,000 for a person over in the garage salary increase, $20,000 for others. Uncalled for. And what are they producing? Some, yes, but you've got a lot of people that aren't. And what are you doing about it? Do you have a job appraisal? Do you give out a memo discussion? Do you give out a warning notice? Whose responsibilities is it? It's just the mayor's, or are you people sitting here? Or both? We don't need stories, we don't need lies, we need you to stand beside the citizens and fix this city right, not just downtown, Bellevue, Woodlawn, Mount Pleasant, Obby Street, Craig Street. It's a disgrace, and you want to give out big salary increases. Thank you.
Thank you. P.D. Vorus.
Excuse me, Madam President, am I here to speak on the agenda?
This is on the legislative agenda, yes.
This is on the legislative agenda. Well, that's what I thought. So I'll talk about, number one, administrative code of the city of Schenectady relative to consolidation of residential lots. I got very concerned about this because at the caucus meeting, I was, I thought I heard the mayor say that we were not going to be bothered with strangling anybody with costs for doing surveyor work, and I thought, oh, gosh, you know, I really don't want a sugar daddy administration. I did have the opportunity to do, to participate in an auction at the county level because of surveyor errors. In fact, there were three properties I was investigating, all three of them I could not have access to without trespassing, and one of them, somebody had already gone ahead and based on the information that they had from surveyors, had built permanent utility buildings on their property. And so it causes quite a hardship. The county had to pay all over, they had to cover the surveyor errors and had to cover the demolition of such properties that were constructed there in order to correct these lines. These lines are important. They're important not only to the owners of the property, they're very important to the city engineers when they go to do their, their work. And so I just want to make sure that when our council signs off on this ordinance, that he is signing that the properties involved will be surveyed upon my request, hard-hearted. But that is the way it needs to be done, and I'm not much at ice hockey, so I'll just have to play field hockey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
My name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. I fail to understand why council insists on spending money on fluoride. Council members had one year to check out other communities to learn how they handle the fluoride issue. Did any of you bother to look into it? Don't take my word for it. Ask your counterparts on other legislative bodies in the capital district about fluoride. The city can eliminate the expenditure of fluoride. I say eliminate, not savings, because council does not save anything. It just spends needlessly, and this is a perfect example. Fluoride is an unnecessary item in the city budget and should be removed. Forget the controversy, consider the cost. Vote no on item number 14. Mr. Erickson, I do have those figures. $54,000 in 2012, $46,000 in 2013, $40,000 this year. I don't know what the difference is. Is the same amount of fluoride being put into the system, or did we get ripped off big time? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Okay, Ms. Parazzo has moved it. Ms. Porterfield seconds. All in favor? Aye. All right, and then we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have 11 people signed up to speak. We'll start with Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening. Happy New Year's to everyone, and I hope it's a prosperous New Year's for everyone and the city. First of all, I'd like to say thank you on the work for our street, but apparently, I was here on December 23rd if I'm correct, and when I spoke about the importance of plowing our street, you see what happened on the 24th, Christmas Eve. We had a serious fire, we lost four houses were knocked down, three of them were burnt. And if we didn't have really got our street done, think about it. I know times that ambulance had come up and couldn't reach us, but I'm just saying, thank you. Second, I just want to talk about, just a quick, I was reading an article today in the Gazette about, you know, the old buildings they want to do, and I noticed there was a paragraph where money was spent on the Vale community years ago, 10 years ago if I'm correct. I don't see where it was done in Moiston Street, or Hattelbrandt. I mean, I don't know when's the last time it was used, I know Ms. Porterfield, Mr. Riggi have been there. But you have a walk, we have one drainage, and that's on the end of Moiston Street by State Street. We have three fire hydrants, only one works. The fire department had a hard time pumping water, and the street, when they talk about paving, I don't see where our street was paved in the last 10 years. I lived there seven years. The sidewalks, the curbs, I don't see where they were done. I lived there for seven years, and I still walk on them cracked sidewalks. I'm saying, when you talk about things and money, and the lady just accused the council of approving things, I'm not going to accuse the council or anyone of anything. I would just like to see the improvement of our neighborhood. I mean, I remember the mayor saying people need to take pride in their street. Well, we are trying to take pride, but what about the city taking some pride and giving back? I understand we're short, but think about the safety. And the other last thing is, I never received my pictures that I left. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Rembert.
Good evening, and Happy New Year's to everybody, and congratulations to you. I wanted to speak about, I am the president for Schenectady County, the city, president for the, for Tended Association, okay? And recently, I was contacted concerning a mold problem in the housing apartment building located in 214 Liberty Street. I got all of you a paper on that, concerning this letter, and I And I was informed that the tenant also informed the management of the mold problem, and that the tenant also made code enforcement aware of the issue as well. However, after I spoke with code enforcement, I was made aware of the fact that code doesn't handle mold. And they should be handling mold problems. Because this is a problem that code enforcement should be able to address when they go out to look at these properties. And they don't handle certain infestation problems like bed bugs. They said they don't handle that problem. In these housing units, during this, okay, and then also, he said, therefore, if housing, to my understanding, has a mold problem, the property can still receive rental certificate? And I'm wondering, why is that? Okay, based on the structure and not the interior of the property. But if there's a mold problem there, and there's young children or a person that has asthma like I do, they could end up in the hospital with that kind of a problem. And that could be a very serious situation for people that have breathing conditions, such as I have breathing conditions. And I think that, the mayor, I'm understanding that that would be more of your position to have code enforcement to be able to do something about the mold problem that is existing in these houses. As I said before, maybe some of the city council members can go with me to look at some of these houses and see the condition that people are actually living in. Because people are living in some very devastating, bad conditions here in Schenectady. I was down at the court system, and I spoke to a person there from SCAP, and they were saying, they also were saying, the conditions of the housing here in Schenectady is atrocious. It's terrible. And you need to do something. Instead of giving everybody all these raises, do something to try to have the standard of living here to get better. Because what is Schenectady going to end up being? A ghost town now? You need to do something to better these housing conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Jason Plank, City of Schenectady, Madam President, City Council Mayor. Four weeks in March 1st is the due date for your, to protest the assessment on your houses. I have said this for every year now, because the city council has given to its developers and its contractors some major concessions during claims of anywhere between 25% to 50% reduction. And if that kind of reduction is available, then the homeowner should be able to turn around, take those same comps, and be able to use them. And you should be able to get at least a 25, if not to 35% reduction in your property taxes. We still need to. So protest your assessment on your houses. It's your right and your productive. You have until March 1st in order to do that. And use the claims, go right back onto the city's website. They've got the list of the agenda items. And go right back and use those properties that have gotten that thing. Do a little bit of homework, and you might be able to save some money on your assessments. So, like I said, you've got another four more weeks. In, for the month of January's committee report, and finally into the report of the county, they did a new purchasing policy. One, they did it, they did not include persons with disabilities. They did not include minorities within it. And they did not even do a outreach to the different communities for the stakeholders that would help try to improve the purchasing agreement. We still do not have a purchasing policy here in the city that's diversified for persons with disabilities or for the minorities. Also, two is that Section 503, which is affirmative action of hiring persons with disabilities, the new regs just came out, and they're mandating that all federal contracts have at least 7% employment for persons with disabilities. And the city needs to upgrade its purchasing requirements onto that piece. You can find it on the Department of Labor's federal contract compliance page, and you can go to the press release, and it'll release all that information. Also, two is that the city has a much stronger apprenticeship program than the state does. And the city has not even enforced that piece of apprenticeship programs on some major construction projects that have happened within the city and the city's controls. We need to start looking into that. We're starting now to get out to bids now. Are starting to go out for the summer construction season and for other purchases. So we need to start looking at those kinds of ideas of how we can be able to start working towards that direction. Where's MAC-TAP? And how are we coordinating with MAC-TAP and making sure that we do it? We've been talking about this for the last 10 years. There hasn't been that kind of coordination. And we need to start working towards it. We need an economic disparity study. It hasn't been done yet. That's also mandatory. So I mean, there are some things that we need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got one big problem that I know of. It's these traffic lights. People are turning where the arrow is not on. We need to enforce that before somebody gets hurt bad. And number two thing is clean up the streets and, you know, put more time on the walk lights. Because people have a lot of handicapped, and older people are having trouble getting across the streets. It's got to be done.
Okay.
That's the way I feel.
Thank you. Harry Brand.
Harry Brand, still a resident and taxpayer in the city of Schenectady. I don't know what you've ever done or if you can do anything about the residency law. I don't blame these few people here. It's gone on for years, letting the people live outside the city. And in my opinion, and it's my opinion only on what I say here, but I don't like the fact that we have all these people living in Glenville, Rotterdam, outside our city limits, Albany County, Montgomery County, Lake George area, whatever county, Saratoga. What are you going to do about it? Are you ever going to do anything about it now? It's a shame. You think these people really have the interest of this city? One interest, what they're getting out of it. And that's it. You people had to live in the city. How can you have supervisors, commissioners, and everybody else living outside the city? They're getting their money, their salary, they're getting their benefits, they're getting overtime, and they're getting, a lot of them are getting clothing allowances. Clothing allowances are not cheap today. It's not even included in their salaries. They're not paying taxes on this stuff. But we hire them. Our mayor promised us he would not hire anybody that did not live in the city. What happened? I don't know where the police chief lives. I don't have nothing against him or the job he's doing. But it's not right to be hiring these people outside the city. We've had enough of that, and we've had some terrible, terrible contracts. How can we write such poor contracts? Look at that paving job on Union Avenue. And why isn't Union Avenue a priority street? More fire trucks and ambulances and trucks go up and down Union Avenue than most cities in this street. We can't take care of our city, our streets, Broadway, Albany Street. You ever go up Albany Street, up above St. Paul's Church? My gosh, you're going to lose a wheel. And you want to give salary increases. You want to give benefits. You want to give this, you want to give that. And the people don't live in the city. Even those that do. There are some people in this city only get a 1% salary increase. And you want to give 4%, 3%, 4%, 40% to others? And I'm not sure these people getting 1% get it all the time. You've got a lot of work. And not always your fault, but you're stuck with it now. And no matter what party you belong with, you've got to work together.
Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here tonight to thank Chad for that movie. It was a beautiful movie. And when our upcoming young people do things like this, we need to recognize them. And Chad, it was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree, he did a great job. P. D. Vorus.
So I'm still P. D. Vorus in City of Schenectady, and I have lived here 15 years. I'm starting on my 14th year in the same apartment. And under a different matrix, I probably be looking forward to having my mortgage paid for in two years and then living the real easy life and the American dream. However, in these 14 years, my rent has increased 25%. And now I'm having to pay to park my car. And some of you people don't have to do things like that. And I'd like to call that to your attention, that I don't think you can really feel my pain unless you are paying every month. And that includes the taxes, school taxes, city taxes, county taxes, property taxes, DSIC assessment taxes, and things of that nature, and without benefits of STAR and other programs. So I think since there's so many property transfers being made around here, and since I'm not in a mom and pop shop where, you know, if you need the money back out of the account we've been holding aside with your rent money, maybe you ought to invest in some of these properties and fix them up, and then really know what it's like to be a part of the passion of Schenectady and what really goes on here. You'll feel much closer contact. I would like to commend the Gazette for their program with the schools of providing newspapers to the students. I think it's a wonderful thing. I grew up with that in my senior year in high school, and it was a very positive thing for my own personal appreciation of newspapers and being, learning to be abreast of what's happening internationally is very positive. And my only concern is after last, the last meeting we had, we had signs where to sit. And we weren't used to that, hearing the state of the city and being told where to sit. And I kind of studied every of the signs before I sat down. And afterwards, it seems to me that seating went, this was a side for the people that were state-sponsored. And the, this was a side for those that were state-protected. These are the big doers, you know? And there were the special programs with Metroplex. They're all members of Metroplex, the good old boys' club. And if they aren't getting enough money from the state and from Metroplex, the state has allowed Metroplex to overbond so that they can get even more money. But, you know, it sounds good and positive for the state of Schenectady. But anyway, the same big guys are getting the same big bucks, and they really have a lot of money and own a lot of acreage here, there, and everywhere. So they missed, I don't want these students to miss what Elmer Birch had to say in the up pages.
Ms. Vorus, I need you to summarize, please.
Yes. Mr. Birch is absolutely right about these pilot programs. They don't, they may sound great, but they don't come anywhere near what tax dollars would bring in, tax revenues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Professor Dwight Williams.
Good evening. I'm not a resident of Schenectady. I go to church here at Friendship Baptist. But I'm here as a college professor at University of Albany School of Public Health, and just want to seek some assistance from folk here and from the council, elected officials. On February 15th, we're holding a community forum to inform the community of the Affordable Care Act. So many Americans don't have health insurance. There's a lot of confusion about what the benefits are, the pros and cons, and would like to let folk know that on the 15th at Friendship House, 955 State Street, from 9:00 to 12:00, we'll have representatives talking about New York State of Health. We'll have navigators there to schedule appointments for individuals to actually register for health care insurance. Martin Luther King indicated that of all forms of inequity, injustice in health care is the most shocking and most inhumane. The Affordable Care Act is a vehicle that will make health care services affordable for those who don't have health insurance. So I have some flyers here. I have some more. Would just like to get your assistance and get any word out so that we can get folk registered for this vital health care information system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ange Morris.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy, City Council. I bring you greetings from the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission. I am the director. First of all, I just want to thank council member John Mutter Varian and also Deputy City Clerk Chad Putnam. They were on the commission for a while and to help the commission bring issues to the community and also to help raise awareness to the community regarding the issues that's impacting the city. So I want to thank them for their dedication and service as being former commissioners. Secondly, I just want to thank the city council and Mayor McCarthy for supporting us at our past Martin Luther King celebration that we had on January 19th. We had Dean Penny Andrews, who was our guest speaker, and also the Union College Gospel Choir. We, this year was our historic year because we had a great overall turnout from the community, from neighborhood associations to the school district and school board members. And just the community at large just came out and supported us. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the commission for supporting us. Your continued support, we greatly appreciate, and we continue to look forward to working with you and also to the mayor to start addressing the issues that's impacting our community. The commission, we are doing some great things in 2014. We have some programs and events that's coming up, so be on the lookout for our events. And also, this is the year, 50th year to commemorate the war on poverty. So the commission, we're going to be doing an event coming up to commemorate the war on poverty. So thank you for this time, and we look forward to working with you and to make this city of Schenectady a better place and also to build our community stronger and make sure that our kids has role models here in the community that they can look to to make their future better. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Clark signed up again, but I believe he left. Okay. Mary McLean.
On Thursday, November 28th, 2013, representatives from the city of Schenectady went to the home of a veteran's widow and foreclosed on her house. Her husband passed away several years ago. She lost her job and did not have the money to pay her taxes. Consequently, as neighbors watched from their porches, the city took her house from her. November 28th, 2013 was also Thanksgiving Day. Why did city council members not help her? It is the same group who carved out a section of the Westinghouse Monument plot to include a memorial for the Bellevue veterans. It is the same group who carries wreaths to the Veterans Memorial on Memorial Day, and so on. All meaningful symbols, to be sure. But when the situation involves the human condition, council fails the test. Why wasn't she helped? Was I supposed to help her? I would have helped her were I sitting on city council. But I was passed over by those of you of you who sit here for another day. I hope the 4,100 voters who put you here are paying attention. You are their government. The city resident who lost her home was not a registered Democrat. She was not a union member. She was a veteran's widow who was trying to survive in a difficult world and her world reached the depth of helplessness when she suffered the embarrassment of foreclosure on Thanksgiving Day. On that day, she left her nine-room Victorian home in Schenectady for a one-bedroom apartment in Iskayuna. She wasn't a deadbeat. She fell on hard times and Schenectady's government turned its back on a veteran's widow. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council.
Schenectady Business and Professional Women's Club has an event coming up, uh, on February, sorry, hold on, March 8th, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's a unique event and it's called Life Unplugged. It's a one-day program designed to give youth, uh, and students an opportunity to learn what it costs to live and pay your bills for one month. So, the program is designed to encourage young adults to make critical decisions that will affect the course of their future. Um, they're encouraged to envision the lifestyle they'd like to have when they're in their mid-20s, select the application, or the occupation they'd like to have as an adult. They receive a checking account deposit equal to one month's salary, uh, from their desired job and then they have to spend their salary first on necessities and then on the extra, uh, to handle life's unexpected events. So, um, very interesting walk-through reality for youth, um, and the program is free. It's open to high school sophomores, juniors and seniors and they can go, uh, if they access the Schenectady BPW site, they can find more information on that. So I encourage youth to get involved. So I think it'll be fun and also informative. Um, yeah, there's just, uh, um, an announcement about an upcoming seminar and discussion about payroll for contractors and small businesses. Again, it's a free, um, event. It's open to the public and it's going to be at 818 Albany Street at the MICTAP building. Phone number is 372-4409, 372-4409. It's Thursday, January 30th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just want to remind folks again that, uh, this coming Friday is the first day to file taxes and for individuals and, uh, the VIDA program is there and available for people who make $52,000 or less. There are five sites throughout Schenectady County and Schenectady's SCAP, uh, 913 Albany Street. There's the Ellis, um, McClellan Campus and also Union College, the Kenny Center. And there, in Glenville Center, there's Glenville Senior Center and also the, um, I believe it's the Rotterdam Senior Center. Uh, if people need to find out exactly what times those sites are open, they can dial 211 and it has all the information on the VIDA sites locally. Uh, so it's a free service and everyone that, um, that prepares taxes there is trained and certified. It's a, um, the program is run with United Way, the IRS and Schenectady Cash Coalition. So, I encourage folks to use that service and to, um, you know, have their taxes done for free and not utilize the services that are not necessarily beneficial to them financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam President. Being on this council for a little over two years, I think some people have a misconception about what council people, uh, are supposed to do and what their duties are. We are basically the Board of Contract and Supply. That's what we are. If somebody's not doing their job correctly out there, a city worker, that's not our job to discipline them. That's the mayor's job to discipline them. When it comes to anything that goes on with city departments, that's the mayor's job. It's not our job. I know Mayor McCarthy, you tell us when it's our prerogative for things. Well, some things are your prerogative. They're not our prerogative, but the ball gets passed to us. When it comes to foreclosures, we don't have a clue whose house you're foreclosing on. How would we know whose house you're foreclosing on? It's just, these are things that we don't have control over. I'm not passing the buck, I'm just saying that's the way it is. It's really as simple as that. Now, some things that we do have control over, I'll speak to them. One of them is there's going to be a council, possibly a council appointment coming up. And I'm sure the party in control will be meeting and discussing this. My recommendation to my colleagues is this. Let's leave the seat open. Let's let the voters decide next November. We've operated with six council people for almost 20 months since I've been on the council. There was only four months, I believe, when we had seven. I would like to see that open. Let the voters decide. It'll take all the other stuff out of the, out of the picture, all the backroom deals, all the arm twisting, all the things that go on with this. So it'll take a lot of pressure off the council also. I would like to see that salary for that council person, there's probably about $13,500 left. I would like to see us buy new energy-efficient air conditioners for the council chambers. Those air conditioning units we have are around 20 years old and they're terrible. So I would like to see that done and maybe we could get, for the council's use, not the council's, to, council to own, maybe tablets for the council to use so we can get rid of all this paperwork that we get every week and we can get into the 20th century or 21st century with that. So there's some things that can be done. I think we'd have money left over, but that's what I would see, like to see and that's my recommendation for whatever it's worth. And I think we would be, um, we'd be able to move ahead and not be stalled on anything, but this is just my recommendation. Now, lastly, I know we're talking pay raises came up tonight. Maybe I was at a different meeting, but I don't remember us voting on anything that anybody got any more money. That didn't happen. You know, the ball's still being dribbled down the court, so we're all thinking about it. We're all going to make good decisions, I'm sure, when that happens. We're all well aware of what the people in the trenches have been doing. We're well aware of that. There hasn't been a lot of pay raises going on. 1037, I think, got 1% or 1.5%. So, uh, when we talk about other things, this is another thing that, it just didn't happen. You know, we didn't give anybody anything yet. I'm not going to say it's not going to happen, but that didn't happen yet. So, I'll take full responsibility and be responsible for the, what, things that we do, but things that we don't do, uh, you know, some of it is Mayor McCarthy's and some of it is just out there for conjecture, but it is what it is. So I just wanted to set the record straight on those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Riggi, I tell staff at department head meetings on a regular basis that when things go right, somebody else takes credit for it. When things go wrong, it's my fault. Uh, I will categorically, uh, say that the City of Schenectady did not do that foreclosure and that the representations made at the rail tonight are just incorrect, as a lot of things happen here. But, uh, it's the nature of, uh, the business. Uh, we appreciate the input from people, uh, coming down here. Some people are more serious and actually want to make substantive change. They want to make the city better. Other people look to complain more and try and always accentuate negatives and a lot of times they're not based in factual, uh, underlying conditions or whatever it may be. But I do appreciate the work that the council does, do, uh, think we have a fairly healthy relationship of going back and forth and, uh, can look to continue that, uh, as we go into 2014 for the full year and looking to continue to build the good things that are happening in this community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what Professor Willens mentioned, um, for people who do have questions about health care insurance, uh, that there is a community forum to learn about the health insurance benefits available under the Affordable Care Act, February 15th, uh, from 9:00 until noon at Friendship House at Friendship Baptist Church on 955 State Street. Uh, the contact number is 518-402-0370. So I know a lot of people have had a lot of questions and concerns about this, so this might be a wonderful opportunity to get information. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Erickson. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.